Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call it December 18th, regular board meeting to order and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Trustee Kishaba.
Present.
Trustee Saturn.
Present.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Ingraffia.
Present.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Present.
Okay, any public comment? Okay, all right. Authorization for payroll and bills. You've had a chance to review payroll and bills. Are there any questions or concerns? Can I have a motion to approve the payroll and bills as presented?
I make the motion to approve them.
Okay, move by trustee Nierdowski, seconded by trustee Ingraffia. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Kishaba.
Aye.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia.
Aye.
And Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye.
Okay, under reports, assessor, Connie.
You all have my written report. One thing that I would add is that we sent out an email to the 4,000 people on our email list and we also sent out a press release. It came to our attention that with the potential of the tax bill going through the Congress, that there was a potential for, as you know, you can deduct your property tax from your federal income tax. What we've been hearing is that that is going to be capped at $10,000. So, the press release that I sent out along with the email was the following suggestion. If in fact, your property tax bill is in excess of $10,000, that you are perfectly within your rights to prepay your first installment bill that comes out February 1st, due in payable March 1st. That means if you do that before the end of the year, you can take three payments off your federal income tax for 2017. And we felt that, obviously, this does not affect everybody, but it certainly does affect a lot of our homeowners that are in fairly, you know, upper moderate price housing and up, so that it might save them some money on their taxes. So, that went out this week.
I had a comment on that. Because in absence of a voucher, can they simply put down their PIN number on there?
Here's the deal. We are getting a lot of cooperation from the treasurer, the Cook County Treasurer's office. If you go on the Cook County Treasurer's website, you put in your PIN number, it will bring up your first installment bill. So, she's making it very easy to prepay. And it will walk you through that you can either print out the bill, take it to your Chase bank, or you can pay it online. If you pay it online, there is a $1 service fee. But you get an immediate email back confirming that you have made that payment.
Now, is, are the other counties following through?
I don't know what the other counties are doing.
Okay.
You know, we just felt that we kept, we started hearing this from a lot of financial planners and attorneys, et cetera. And we've checked with the Treasurer's office. They've expedited the process and we felt that it was worthy to get out to our people.
Is it the 2018 property tax?
Yes, well, no, it's 2017 payable because we are, we always pay in arrears.
And it's for, just for the first installment, you can't pay the whole amount per se?
No, because we don't know what the tax rates are gonna be, what the equalizer is going to be. So, it will be a savings over a small period of time, but...
What if you pay it with your mortgage? Your mortgage company pays it?
You're gonna have to check with your lender.
Okay.
Because you're gonna have to determine whether or not there's enough in that escrow fund.
Mm-hmm, okay. But you wouldn't be paying it to your escrow fund. It has to go to the Cook County Collector. You can't just give your bank this extra money because it's just gonna be in your escrow. It's not gonna be shown as being...
You could pay the treasurer directly and then...
Yeah, and then advise, advise your bank.
Any other questions you might have?
Because this was an email, right?
Yeah.
We sent it out as an email. It appeared, blurb appeared in the Herald today. And I spent time on the phone with Tom Robb today. He's following up.
Is that $10,000 limit? Is that just for property tax or is that your property tax and your income tax?
No, it's, it's property tax taken off of your gross income.
I'm not too sure about that. I think that state and local taxes and your property tax.
Well, I think it can be all, but at this, you know, we're only dealing with this, which is the property tax.
I'm trying to think of what came out in the final thing. I'm very familiar with the House version.
Yeah, well, we don't know what's in the final bill, but we thought if in fact, this was going to be an issue that at least you had the opportunity to...
Well, and when people freak out, remember it's gonna be, if they pay this, they'll get it. But a lot of these people, they're, they're already getting double the standard deduction. So, it's gonna be $24,000 for married filing jointly, which a lot of them are around there anyway. So, if they pay that, that one installment, they'll be way ahead because they'll probably be under $24,000 in the following year for their itemized deductions. So, it's a very good thing to do.
Okay, any further questions?
She, you can get always that request from the assessor. Thanks, Connie.
If somebody doesn't have their PIN or they don't know their PIN, they can make a question.
They can certainly call us. But when you go on to the Treasurer's website, you can also put your address in and your PIN will pop up.
Okay.
Thank you. Clerk's report, George.
On the clerk's report, I, all we really have, we had no FOIAs. I've listed here the filings that we've done in the second half of the year. Just gives you what we filed and what the dates are filed in. I'm not gonna address the videotaping issue because that's on the agenda later on. We did, I will mention that I don't have "other" on the agenda anymore. And the reason I, I'm not putting "other" on the agenda under "new business" is because while we can ask questions or like, like you asked last time, you know, what's happening with the bus drivers? Or Andrea, what's, have you received the bill from the attorney? But you can't, we can't put in there a discussion of an issue of, for instance, last time, who, who is responsible for compensation or hiring? That has to be, that has to be under the Open Meetings Act. That has to be a topic that we put into the agenda. Otherwise, we're gonna run afoul of the Open Meetings Act. So, once again, you can ask questions. You can do things like that. But if we, if you want a subject addressed, it has to be a line item. It has to be on the agenda. Okay, that's all I got.
Any questions for George? Thank you. George, Highway Commissioner Art.
Submitted my written report. I'd like to add something, too. We've been getting our loads of salts Friday and today. And we're still with the Cook County joint purchasing. And it's really a good thing because when I first started here, the salt was going for somewhere around $100 a ton. And what we're getting for delivered with cartage and everything today was $56 a ton. So, it's quite a savings by piggybacking the Cook County Highway Department. Any questions?
Any questions for Art?
No.
All right, thank you, Art.
Thank you.
So, just to have the standard reports, just a couple of things. We did extend an offer to an individual for the bus driver position. The plan is to have him begin 12/27, obviously barring, you know, and that'll be the case barring any issues, drug testing and things like that that don't come back fast enough. But we anticipate 12/27. Very qualified candidate, working for, providing service for a couple of different companies since 2001 for the Schaumburg Dial-A-Ride program, paratransit. So, same type, you know, clientele that he'll be working with here, very familiar. So, we're very excited to have him start. If there's any delays or anything like that, I'll keep you posted. But we'll be back. Obviously, he'll start training. And then shortly after into the first of the year, we'll, he'll be up and running. So, I just wanted to address one thing. We, trustee Saturn had asked that 7-Eleven Chalmersford be added under executive session. I just wanted to clarify why it wasn't added there. We just have to be careful about what we go under executive session for. And because nothing new is being discussed, we weren't setting price. We weren't, we didn't have a contract to review or anything like that. We just couldn't do that. I'd be happy to answer any questions you have when we get to that agenda item. But obviously, we're focused on the other two properties. But we will have a preliminary contract, IGA, to review next month. And then using that, we can go into executive session and discussing all the details that, that come into that. So, I just wanted to clarify. That's all I have. Any questions? Okay. All right. Can I have a motion to go into executive session to discuss the sale of township real estate located at 401 West Gulf Road in Mount Prospect?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Kishaba.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Nierdowski. Roll call, please.
Trustee Kishaba.
Aye.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia. Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye.
Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and call the December 18, 2017 regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees back to order and ask the clerk to call a roll.
Trustee Kishaba.
Present.
Trustee Saturn.
Present.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Ingraffia.
Present.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Present. Okay, next order of business under old business, the sale of township real estate of 401 West Gulf Road, Mount Prospect. Can I have a motion to approve the bid from 405 West Gulf LLC for $245,000 with the following leaseback terms? Free rent from April 1st, 2018 to the end of September, 2018; $1,500 rent from October 1st, 2018 to December 31st, 2018; and $3,500 in rent from January 1st, 2019 to March 31st, 2019.
So moved.
Moved by trustee Kishaba.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Nierdowski. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Kishaba.
Aye.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Motion carries. All right, next order of business, update for township real estate at 7-Eleven Chalmersford. Be more than happy to answer any questions. There's nothing, nothing new to report. Everything's on track. We just have to finalize the preliminary IGA for this, for both board, the village board and the township board to review.
And you said we'll have that next month to review?
Yeah, hopefully now that we're kinda, we're wrapping up these two properties, we'll have it in short order and we'll get, as soon as we, we'll... The goal is to have it to you in plenty of time to review before the January meeting and then we can discuss it at the January meeting.
The contract to come.
The IGA, yep.
What's the timing that we're thinking of right now for this swap?
The ti, I mean, the timing's really whatever both boards can agree on. I know there's some concerns about the daycare. So, it's really whatever this board's gonna feel comfortable with. We're kinda in the driver's seat as far as that goes. So, I know, I mean, I don't think I'm speaking out of school. I think obviously, the, there's interest to, with the Park District and this Bulgarian group to purchase it from the village. And I know the village is, Elk Grove Village is looking forward to, you know, moving sooner than later. But at the end of the day, we have to do whatever we feel comfortable with, so...
So, as long as we don't have concerns about the daycare being pushed out of there quickly, we could go ahead with this pretty soon, now that we're done with our other properties. I think that would be a good idea.
Yeah, I mean, yep. Any other questions about 7-Eleven?
When did you think the IGA could be available, should be available?
I'm hoping, I'm hoping by middle of January at the latest. Like I said, now the attorneys on both sides can, can focus and drill down on finishing that up. They've been working on it, I know. They just have to find...
Okay.
But I'll keep you updated on any delays, but that's the goal. Okay, any other questions? All right, next item, videotaping of township board meetings. Let's turn it over to George.
Yeah, we got, we've been back and forth, back and forth. We finally got the final proposal in from Elk Grove, Elk Grove Village for videotaping the township meetings. I will say there's two issues that have arisen since then. One is the contractors are signing, are being required to sign a liability waiver to hold Elk Grove Village not liable. Because what they're having is they have two, two village employees and two contractors. And the two contractors need to be, have their own liability insurance. But I don't think the village has really ever verified that they have that. So, we need to verify that first, that they actually do have that liability insurance. We don't wanna take that liability on ourselves. That's one thing we would need to check before we proceed with this, the certification of insurance. And the second thing is, our current vendor has asked that we put a RFP out so that he can bid on this, on this, this service on an apples-to-apples basis, where we actually say specifically what we want and then be able to compare what the village is offering and what he's offering versus our RFP, so that he can make an honest bid on it. I will be honest that the, a professional services contract and a contract under $20,000 doesn't require an FFP, RFP. However, to, a fair way of doing this would be to, I guess, to provide a, an RFP that lays out specifically what we're looking for, so it's a fair competition, so to speak, for the, for the contract. That's, that's where that is right now. If we, if we would, the six-month period for reviewing or for using, for taping the meetings is, is ending this month. And so, this is the point where we're gonna review, review this, whether we wanted to continue to do it or who, if we continue, who we would do it with. So, we're at that point. And we have our current vendor who would like to bid on it. And we have the Elk Grove Village now who's come up with a bid and there, with, with a proposal theirs. Their proposal is 1,16205. That would run through April 30th, when it would probably be increased. That's the end of their fiscal year. And that, that, that includes, includes everything. That includes everything, but it, it does not appear that they're providing the same, for lack of word, depth in terms of numbers of cameras, in terms of, in terms of the mobile cameras rather than fixed cameras, two cameras, not multiple cameras. And so, it is a different, it is a, it will, it will be of a different quality.
And in either of these cases, you're not going to be having something where you're gonna bid on something that would be for a year or whatever, you're avoiding the $20,000 amount that you have to...
Well, you won't be, we wouldn't be, even for a year, it wouldn't be $20,000. And, but the village will only do it through April because that's when their fiscal year ends.
Okay.
Then they would, then they would come back. And it would, they, they said it will be higher. I don't think substantially higher, but it will be higher.
You said $40 to $50. I mean, it wouldn't be...
While, while our current vendor is willing to negotiate a contract.
That was my next question.
Yeah, for a year or, or more.
Okay.
So, the question is, this is very, very nice what we have, but do we need all this?
I don't know.
If we can save a lot of money every month?
Now, if you put an RFP, he may not have all of this either. He would maybe reduce what he's doing and maybe it'd be a lower cost even then. I, I don't know.
How long would this process take?
I'm not sure. I'd have to ask.
RFP and bid, because every month that we don't get this done, we're spending a lot more money.
Yeah, we'd continue on a month-by-month basis is what we would do. So, I mean, what we could do, Paul, could we get a, could we put an, could we get an RFP put together in two weeks or so?
Yeah, we just, well, we could. We just have to get what details we want in there. So, I'd have to work with you on what it is that you want.
Yeah, we could do that. And then at that point, he would be giving it, the village would be getting it, giving it again. And the village could tweak theirs if they needed to. And he could come with his proposal.
Could you please remind me of what the annual cost is right now?
What's $1,000?
Annual cost?
No, monthly, monthly.
It's a monthly cost we're working on. $17.50.
That's, that's usually a month-long.
Yeah. For six, six months at a monthly rate, if he would, if we renew it, he would go to a annual rate which would be lower.
Yeah, it's, well, it's monthly if we want a longer term. $1,500, yeah.
He would negotiate, he would negotiate a lower price. He's asking just that he get, he gets an apples-to, a chance to, to bid on an apples-to-apples contract.
So, the RFP would probably be what the village is offering less because we don't necessarily need all this.
Yeah, I would say that, yeah, I would say, yeah. Generally speaking, it would be kind of what the village is doing. I mean, yeah, I'd, I'd have to take a look at this a little closer. I mean, it looks like it's okay. But I mean, I have to look at it a little closer. And I'd wanna look at, I have not looked at what they, what they produce. I've not looked at their Park District meetings or anything like that and see what type, we, we have a very nice product here right now, but do we need it? I don't know.
Right, yeah.
Excuse me, they would also post it to YouTube.
They would post it to YouTube, too, wasn't it? Yeah.
They would also give copies of it to other villages who, if they have cable in their village, they could put it on their systems. So, that would cover other cities in our township.
Yeah, I would, I would reckon, if you wanted to go the RFP route, you could talk to George or Paul. And if you wanted certain things listed like that, all those things could be added to the RFP.
Well, doesn't that beg the question, though, do we want to continue to videotape the meetings?
That's, that's the first thing. Yeah, it's, yeah.
That's the first question.
That's your first question. So, your six months is up. You can choose to continue. And then which, and maybe do an RFP, decide what vendor you want. You have a general idea what they're gonna charge, but you wanna do it apples-to-apples? Or you could choose not to do it or do it just for certain meetings or whatever?
I would like to continue videoing. I know a lot of people are watching it and it...
Yeah, more than I expected.
Yeah. And they come up and ask me questions from the meetings that they see, which is important. So, how does everyone else feel about that?
I see why not continually.
I'll defer to what other people want. I'm not, I really don't care one way or the other. Bob, how do you feel?
Well, I've said before that, first of all, I really like it. If I miss a meeting, I can watch the meetings. I like that. But I've said before, it's an open meeting. Anybody can come in and videotape it. I think that it's not exactly the best way to be spending money. If you wanna continue with the videotaping of it, oh, well and good. But let's get a quality product at a reasonable price. And I'm not saying that this is an unreasonable price at all.
The other thing is, our school board meets on the same night we do. So, everybody in District 59, which is probably the same borders almost as our township, cannot come. So, even though we're, we're open, we're here, people can come. Like, I can never go to a school board meeting. Well, I can go to every other one because they're every two weeks. But nobody who goes to a school board meeting, and those meetings are full every time of people in the community going to speak up, they can't come to these. So, even though we have open meetings, it doesn't mean there aren't other conflicting things going on that people can't come to ours.
So, is the, is the, is the board's sort of preference right now for us to put together an RFP to get it to both of these and have them retweak their, their bids? And then we'd hopefully are, can, can look at...
Yes, and what they're really gonna be, yes.
Yeah.
Can we get this done and approved by the next meeting?
I hope so. I mean, that's what my goal would be.
Can I get a copy of what they sent you?
Sure.
I mean, if someone wants to formulate a motion, I mean, I, I mean, I'm kind of...
I'd either like to approve Channel 6 doing it tonight or do the RFP and then vote next month.
Pick one of them, make a motion.
I, I mean, I, I'd like to see an apples-to-apples compare. I mean, if we're gonna do this, I'd like to see just, I mean, you know, like I said, I mean, anytime, you know, I mean, we should, we should see the, yeah, I mean, there's...
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Propose a motion.
Yeah, that's fine.
Propose a motion that we go out to an RFP.
Okay.
There's a motion by trustee Ingraffia to put out an RFP for video servicing of public meetings. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by trustee Kishaba. Any further discussion?
Yeah, I would like that to include that the tapes be available for all the other towns in the township.
In the, in the RFP.
Would it be a part of the RFP?
You mean in the RFP.
That's what I mean, yeah, yeah.
That's not a part of the motion, that's a part of the RFP.
Right, correct.
Correct.
All right, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Kishaba.
Aye.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Ingraffia.
Aye.
Trustee, I mean Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Just to, as a kind of period on this, just so we're clear, we might wanna have a second motion to determine what we do in the meantime. Do we wanna continue? I mean, yeah, I mean, obviously, it's up this month. Just for clarification, I don't know if you wanna wait or do you wanna continue with Laurel until we review the RFP or hold off? Just so we, there's no question.
We were sort of hoping that we'd have the figures next month. So, we'd have to go stay with this for next month.
No, I mean, well, we wouldn't, we wouldn't, no, we wouldn't have to. And that's why I wanted to clarify, because we could just not do it. I just wanted to clarify. That way, there's no confusion.
You mean, have no video recording next month?
It would, I'm just saying it would be up to the board. I just wanted to clarify, since it was kind of agreed that the six-month timeframe ended tonight.
Oh, I thought you were saying that, I thought earlier, George, that you said it ends next month.
No, it's tonight.
I misunderstood you, okay.
Tonight's the, this is the six-month point.
Would we be able to get like a one-month contract? Or would that be, would that cost us more?
No, he'll just, he'll keep doing it on a one-month basis. He'll just keep rolling it over until we tell him we wanna stop.
Yeah.
Or tell him we wanna cut a new contract with him.
I was hoping we would have the agreement with Channel 6 done way before now. Because every month, we're spending hundreds more.
Well, it's assuming that, yeah, I mean...
So, can we say for sure we're gonna have this insurance checked?
I can't tell you for sure. I can't guarantee for sure.
Here, let me, let me, put it this way. If you're not satisfied where we're at in the process in January, you put it on the agenda, we vote on moving to Channel 6. You can stop this at any point in the process. So, just because you put out for an RFP, doesn't mean you have to follow through.
Okay, I see what you're saying.
You can, at any point, you have the authority to change. You can say, this is taking too long, add, add the item to the agenda. You vote on it and, you know, whatever happens, happens. happens. So like you, like you're in the driver's seat as far as that goes. So we can do that, and if it, the process isn't moving forward like you like, like you would like, we can halt the process and change gears, so.
This is taking longer than I would've expected to, but there's just been changes all the way. Just, it changes, it keeps changing.
So, what would we like to do moving forward, until, as we're working through this RFP process?
I make a motion, we would continue with Laurel for January.
Okay. A motion was made by trustee Saturn to continue with Laurel through January. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by trustee Nierdowski. Roll call, please.
Trustee Kishaba.
Aye.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffio.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay. Under new business, the first item, recording committee of the whole meetings. I just sent out an email last week, just threw out an idea, because committee of the whole meetings, I think they've served this board very well to hammer out issues. We can drill down on issues. Obviously, we're gonna be going into budget, dealing with the daycare voucher program. Gives us flexibility to hold meetings. Obviously, the expense of video recording meetings are, are of concern. And I just thought, because we typically sit around the conference table, can audio record, and then no final business can be conducted in committee of the whole meeting anyway. It has to come to a public meeting anyway, which would be video recorded. So I just thought I'd throw that out there, give us some flexibility moving forward, so.
I don't think that's necessary. I agree. I don't think it's necessary to record them.
To video record them.
We can audio, we can audio record.
Just audio recording.
I agree.
All right. So, can, then can I have a motion to exempt committee of the whole meetings from the video recording requirement?
I move the exempt committee of the whole meetings from the audio record, uh, recording requirement.
Video recording.
I mean, video, excuse me. I had one hour of sleep last night.
A second.
Moved by trustee Kishaba, seconded by trustee Saturn. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Kishaba.
Aye.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffio.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Excuse me. Okay. We just have the annual trip transit grant and service agreement, resolution to approve. Any questions about that resolution? Okay. Can I have a motion to approve Resolution twenty seventeen dash nineteen, the twenty eighteen trip transit grant and service agreement?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Graffio.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Nierdowski. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Kishaba.
Aye.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffio.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay. Then we have changes in state law, triggered requirement to have a resolution establishing a policy to prohibit sexual harassment in, in the township, I think all units of government. We have a sexual harassment policy, but it has to be a resolution. The township attorney took it as an opportunity to strengthen the policy as well, so added language to the policy. So if we decided to move forward, we would approve the resolution and the updated policy. The resolution refers back to the policy as an exhibit, and this is required by January fifteenth, so.
What is, you know, just out of curiosity, the, what's the value of having a resolution and a policy, is there?
State, the state, state's, state law is just requiring an actual resolution for whatever reason. But, yeah, normally, we could handle it by policy.
We have a policy, but it requires a resolution.
State law requires a resolution. And then, so, yeah, what, 'cause, yeah. So, any questions about Resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty?
It's exactly what we've had, correct?
What's that?
It's exactly what we've had.
No.
No, there's some additions to it.
No, there's, the policies, yeah, there's, it's stronger. Yeah, I mean, it's strengthened. Especially, I think this, the, was it the retaliation? The retaliation is what primarily was strengthened.
And everybody has to sign it.
Does it have to, well, this, that's the... Yeah, deploy acknowledgement, yes.
I move we adopt Resolution two oh one seven dash twenty.
Okay, moved by trustee Kishaba, is there, seconded by trustee Graffio. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Kishaba.
Aye.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffio.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay, now, the, the update to the policy, like I said, the resolution lists, obviously has the language in here, but reserved, refers to the policy as Exhibit A. So there were some revisions that you were sent, obviously strengthening the policy. So any questions about those changes? Can I have a motion to approve the recommended changes to the sexual harassment policy?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Kishaba.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Nierdowski. Any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Trustee Kishaba.
Aye.
Trustee Saturn.
Aye.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Graffio.
Aye.
Supervisor Sweeney.
Aye. Okay. Last item of business, the daycare voucher program, obviously switching over April first of twenty eighteen. Before we dive in, I just thought I'd throw out an idea, and if it's something you'd like to talk about, great. If not, we can, you know, talk about how this program might shape up. But I had a very, very good conversation with Annette from the daycare on Friday, and she has a lot of good ideas about the transition and what could happen after the transition, potentially based on what the board might approve for how the program would work. But obviously, she, she has a lot of talent and a lot of knowledge, and really cares about the families, of which I know none of us had any doubt. And because of her commitment, I asked her, and she gladly accepted, to participate and be an active participant in committee of the whole meetings. And I think we could really benefit from having committee of the whole meetings on this issue to really drill down and focus and have her there, because she can, I mean, she's, she's a great resource. I've learned a lot from her about daycare in Illinois and things like that over the last year. And like I said, I even, you know, learned even more on, on Friday about what the needs of, what the requirements from the state are, what the needs of those, the, the current families are, and she can be a great resource. So I just thought, instead of digging in tonight, maybe I go back to Annette and get some dates. We start in early January, start scheduling some committee of the whole meetings, which she can attend, and we can start kinda seeing where our thoughts are on the program, how that matches up with hers, what roadblocks she can recommend that we might face, or different directions we could go. So I throw that out there, and, and that's it, so.
I think that sounds great. Is there any chance we can do a committee of the whole meeting the week of New Year's?
I'm hoping. I'm gonna get back.
Okay, I'm gonna be out of commission. I have knee surgery on the ninth knee replacement, so I'm gonna be out of commission for a few weeks, so.
So my hope is to do, I, the only, like I said, I, and we could have one whether Annette's there or not, but I mean, I'm hoping we can get some dates from Annette.
I would think you'd really want her there to promote, otherwise we'll just, we'll drift around.
She really is a good resource to keep, and she really kinda brings, you know, when I talk about things, she's really good at talking about, you know, what the state requirements are, so we can really zero in on the issue. So we can get to Annette tomorrow, find out some dates.
The very first week, right?
And hopefully, we can start scheduling something, and I think, it would just, she's just a great resource for us to talk.
I would work around her a little bit.
All right, she's, she's looking at the second, you know, obviously, Sunday's the thirty-first, Monday's New Year's Day. I do wanna let you know that I have to go down to Bloomington for Township Officials of Illinois Trustees Division on Friday.
Okay.
Why don't, why don't, why don't we just have, talk to Annette and come up with a bunch of things?
Yeah, 'cause between, between, when's your surgeries?
The ninth, so third and a fourth might be good.
Between the second and the ninth, I'll have her throw out some dates.
Second's on the eighth.
The second and the eighth. So first, January first, or second through...
Right, or are you doing something on the eighth?
I'd rather not be the eighth, but see what she says. She won't be available the fifth, so maybe the third or fourth.
Well, the fifth, it depends. It would have to be in the evening, right?
Yeah, it'll be evening, yeah.
She's pretty flexible.
But if you're down, if you're down for, if you're out of town for a township conference, you could call in. I mean, if that's, that's, that's business.
I could do that.
So, I mean, that's, that would qualify. Well, it doesn't matter. I mean, as long as, if it's, if you're traveling on business, you can, it qualifies as, yeah, we're not voting anything.
But she can listen, yeah.
But participate, yeah. All right, then, that'll be the next step, so.
So you let us know this.
We're gonna reach out to Annette tomorrow and get some dates from her.
Okay, I mean, all right, just for planning. And thank you very much for getting this job description information to me, I, to everyone, I guess. I appreciate it.
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Can I make a comment?
Um, sure.
Sure. I would like to thank Billy Bropre for donating three hundred books to our library.
Oh, very nice.
Did he give us, do we have his contact information when he dropped them off?
I'm not sure on that, but I do.
Yeah.
No, we send, we just wanna make sure, 'cause we send letters out, thanking folks, so. Let us know.
Okay.
Yep, very good.
Are they taking more property from us here?
Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Moved by trustee Kishaba.
Seconded.
Seconded by trustee Saturn. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Merry Christmas, everybody.
Yes, Merry Christmas.